Ladies and gentlemen, I pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our home.
Okay. For the roll call, Commissioner Brewer.
Here.
Commissioner Clement.
Here.
Commissioner Etchegod.
Here.
Commissioner Franklin.
Here.
Commissioner Nix, not here yet. Commissioner Day.
Here.
I am present. Okay. Item number three, public comment. Get my glasses on. This time is reserved for members of the audience to comment on subject matters that are not on the agenda but are within the jurisdiction of the Lamoore Planning Commission. Speakers are asked to limit their comments to three minutes per person. Commission is prohibited by law from taking any action on matters not on the agenda. Any handouts for the commission shall be provided to the Planning Commission Secretary for Distribution, to the commission and appropriate staff. Do we have any comments from the public?
Just let the record show if you receive anything off the side of the email.
So no communications for the committee. Okay, no. Hearing none, we move to item four, approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of March 8th, 2021. We have the opportunity to review the minutes, I hope.
I'll move to accept the minutes as written.
Second. Okay, a motion by Commissioner Etchegod. The second came from Commissioner Clement. Any discussion? There's a roll call. Commissioner Etchegod.
Aye.
Commissioner Clement.
Aye.
Commissioner Brewer.
Aye.
Commissioner Franklin.
Aye.
Commissioner Day.
Aye.
And I vote aye. Item number five, public hearing. Major Site Plan Review Number 2020-06, a request by Helena Agricultural Enterprises for the construction of a new facility to include storage, blending and sale of bulk and prepackaged dried liquid fertilizer along with storage of agricultural protection projects. Project site is approximately 31 acres located south of Industry Way, east of Production Avenue, west of Bellhaven Drive and State Route 41. An initial study mitigated negative declaration was prepared in conformance with CECL guidelines. Mr. Brandt.
Thank you, Steve Brandt, City Planner. This first item is for the Planning Commission to review the site plan and the comments that staff has prepared on that site plan. The site is located on the south side of Industry Way, and if you recall from your last meeting, we reviewed a solar facility for La Prino Foods. This is directly to the west of that site. I showed on the screen here. The site is zoned light industrial, and therefore this use isn't allowed use under the zoning, and therefore we're only here tonight reviewing the actual site layout, the site plan. So the site plan is shown here. There's a number of fairly large buildings. The main access for vehicles will be from Industry Way with one entryway. The entire site would be fenced. There would also be a rail spur added so the site would have access for rail deliveries. There'd be a bonding basin at the southeast corner of the site. So some of the notable conditions that there are comments, go ahead. That staff is recommending what we, first of all, we did do a mitigated negative declaration that was prepared. There were some biological, cultural and air quality analysis and traffic analysis, and they all found there to be no significant impacts. We did the tribal notification as provided by PB 52, and the Tachioke tribe does want consultation and cultural monitoring. And I don't know if we've talked about that before. What that basically is, is that they would have a representative on the site during grading activities in case they, something is discovered, then they can act appropriately. The parking spaces that are provided meet the city standard. However, there's some areas to get to those parking spaces that weren't proposed to be paved, and so our comments include that there needs to be paved, paving between all of the, from the entrance to all of the parking areas as well as the trash enclosures for the trash trucks. And then finally, for along the north side of the site or south side of Industry Way, that the curb gutter and sidewalk and pavement pave out would be destructed along with a 15-foot landscape area between the road and the proposed chain link fence. So, oh, and then finally, this shows the elevations for the office building, and the zoning ordinance does have some design standards for industrial buildings, and the site, this meets those standards. So our recommendation is that the Planning Commission approve the resolution approving the Major Site Plan Review 2020-06 with the conditions listed. One of the conditions we added was to change the timing for the hazardous management plan that was listed in the mitigated neg deck to happen at building permit stage, and we were recommending now we change it to occupancy. So that way they can prepare it after they have their building permit, but before they occupy the site. And yeah, the main condition is just that it be developed per the site plan and the comments that we've provided.
Okay. Thank you. Comments from the public?
Do you have a public hearing?
Public hearing is opened at 7:09. Any comments from the public?
Nathan Olson, City Manager and resident of Lamoore. I just want to say that I want to thank staff for all their hours and hard work they've put into this to get Helena to come over to Lamoore, as well as Gareth himself, who spent a lot of hours on the phone. This is a great project for our city. This will be one of the largest tax contributors to our city once we get this all wrapped up and done, so I just wanted to thank the staff for their time and for Helena to look at Lamoore and make this a reality, and for the Peterson family too. They've been very helpful in making this happen, so thank you. And I highly encourage the Planning Commission to pass this as requested by staff. Thanks.
Additional comments for the public?
Just let the record show if you receive anything now or anything. Can we check on the bond initiation?
Same way. So no correspondence for the commission was submitted? Okay, we will pause the public hearing at 7:10. Commissioners, comments, questions?
Five.
I don't have any comments. It looks like staff did their due diligence in making sure this is a good project, and City Manager made it sound like it's going to be great for the city. I'd like to see you move forward.
For the comments, questions?
Yeah, I agree with Commissioner Franklin. It's, I think this is going to be a great project for Lamoore. When I first heard that Helena was considering moving to Lamoore, I got really excited about that because if you've seen their plant in Hanford, it's pretty good size, so my brother worked for Simplot, but don't, no offense. But this is going to be good. I'm excited.
So I have a question. Is it a relocation from the Hanford side? Is that what it's intended to be?
Gareth Davis, Western Business Unit Project Manager for Helena. Yes, it's a relocation for our two locations. We have one on 11th in Houston and another on Lacy and 43. And yeah, as Nathan mentioned, your staff did very well. Appreciate all their efforts. I handle all of our development in the 10 western states. That's what our Western Business Unit encompasses, and it was a pleasure working for them, working with them, and I look forward to working with them through the process of getting and issuing building permits. It's, I know you referenced Lacy. We didn't get a chance to really build there, but we're excited to build a new facility here in Lamoore, and it's in 2021, so we are looking at improvements to efficiencies in the plant and things of that nature, so.
So it is a replacement then?
Yes.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure.
It'll be a relocation.
I have a question. How many employees do you think you're going to have?
We stated in our application, 22 is what we approximate at this point in time.
Thank you.
I have a question, I don't know to whom I should address it. The site plan is just to the east of Production Avenue, and partway, maybe halfway across the property is a cul-de-sac. Where would the spur be in, or am I missing it here somewhere?
The site doesn't include the cul-de-sac on production.
No, that's, that yours is just to the east of that cul-de-sac, I understand that.
Yeah. The spur, the spur would be along the eastern boundary of the proposed 31 acres, so the facility that they referenced, that La Prino is putting in solar. It would be just on the other side of where we would construct a fence, or whether they're constructing a fence. I'm not sure what their plans are.
Is it short?
Yes, it's, yeah, so the, you can see the curvature there of the spur just to the north of the bonding basin. And then there's six large tanks, so it's going between the basin and the six large tanks, and then it comes down and goes into what's called ladder track. So there's three additional spurs on our property for uploading the dry liquid fertilizer.
All right. What kind of, when I went to look at it, I got lost in La Prino's parking lot because I was on the other side of the fence. What kind of traffic are you looking at moving down Industrial Way? After that area?
Yeah, I think we had approximately 128 trips per day between the employees and the trucks.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions or comments?
I have a question regarding, there's also a residential project that's going to be kind of catty-cornered from this project on the, to the south, southwest. So do you see any kind of interference at all involving the facility and then that project? Like this residential area?
No, I wouldn't anticipate any issues. We generally try to look for facilities in the county because obviously the county supports our customer base, all the farmers in Central Valley, but we do have facilities in Kerman. We have a very large facility in Kerman, and there's residents just to the north of the tracks there. The whole city of Kerman actually is north of the tracks. And that actually houses our sister company, Helena Industries, which manufactures as well.
Yeah.
And I guess you've seen the Hanford, we're across from Cosco. All of the residents that'll live on the other side of the tracks will at some point make their way south of our old facility.
All right. Any further questions? Hearing none?
I just, just one, we, we don't have any issues with La Prino on this project at all, I guess, because I haven't heard anything.
From what I've read, I have not heard any issues, any issues with La Prino.
And as a matter of fact, there were some landmark issues early on, and there was joint meetings during Helena, La Prino and the city to make sure the levels and the grades and stuff were all in the same starting point, so they were already talked, they've been agreed in. Change number.
So one other question, is there any, or was potential danger, since there's going to be a solar farm creating a pretty good amount of energy just to the west of the plant and having a large amount of fertilizer? Is there any potential for serious danger involving, you know, high amount of electrical energy and then tanks of fertilizer?
No, shouldn't be. There are some fertilizers that you'd be concerned about, but we're not proposing any of those.
Hearing none, further comment?
Ready for a motion? Yeah, I'll make a motion to adopt resolution number 2021, tag 04, approving major site plan review. Number 2020, tag 06, with conditions.
The motion, do I have a second? I'll second. Okay, motion by Commissioner Franklin, second by Commissioner Etchegod. Mr. Franklin?
Aye.
Commissioner Etchegod?
Aye.
Commissioner Brewer?
Aye.
Commissioner Clement?
Aye.
Commissioner Day?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Passes. Okay. This is a, we will, a public hearing. Starting at 7:18. Good?
Seven.
Start, okay.
Okay.
Yeah, Steve Brandt, this is, this is item number six. It's a tentative parcel map request by Seamus Farms. This is related to the previous item that you just approved. The Helena site is on this property, but the parcel itself is close to 150 acres, about 148 acres. Helena only requires 32 and a half acres, and so the parcel map is creating the parcel that Helena would purchase, and then the other parcel would remain owned by Seamus Farming, and there's no proposal for any development at this time on that one. So basically looking at a two parcel, parcel map dividing 148 acres into 116 and 32 acres. The staff's reviewed this and is recommending approval. Those parcel maps there. So as I said, the approval would create a parcel for Helena to purchase. There's conditions that are listed in the staff report and resolution, as well as some markups by the city engineer. The conditions of approval are pretty much standard conditions for parcel maps, and the parcel can be created without improvements. The improvements would occur, such as the road widening and stuff, that's why we conditioned the site plan with the road widening and not the actual parcel map. And the parcel map approval is categorically exempt from CECL. That's all I have.
Okay. Remember the public comment? Questions?
So it's just a portion in the southeast corner, it's actually going to?
The, the map is actually showing, yeah, go to the map there. So the, the parcel on the, on the east is the parcel that Helena would purchase.
Okay.
Parcel on the west would still be owned by Seamus.
So it's entirely from the tracks all the way up to Industrial?
Yes.
And just, Industry Way?
Yes.
Okay. No questions or comments? Okay, hearing none, entertain a motion. Oh, got a close call. We have call?
I don't know, so it shows that there's seven people on. Are there any callers on the line that have a comment regarding this item?
Go down the map. Okay, we'll close this at 7:22. entertain a motion on item number six.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution number 2021-05, recommending approval of tentative parcel map number 2021-01.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Etchegod, second by Commissioner Franklin. Any further discussion? Call for the question. Commissioner Etchegod?
Aye.
Commissioner Franklin?
Aye.
Commissioner Brewer?
Aye.
Commissioner Clement?
Aye.
Commissioner Day?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Hears. And then we will move on to item number seven. We have another public hearing. Mr. Brandt?
Thank you. Item number seven is a major site plan review and conditional use permit requested by LJQ Partners, LOC, to develop a convenience store with food service, another retail, a drive-through window, onsite car wash and a six-pump fuel station. This is located on the northeast corner. It's on the northeast corner of Bush Street and Bell Haven, so, so north side of Bush Street between Bell Haven and the freeway off-ramp. So the applicant's proposing a 4,280 square foot convenience store. They're frozen? Let me keep going. We're having problems with the screen. Can you get to your email from there, Christie? No? Okay.
Shall we move forward without it? You come with that, Steve?
That's the package.
Here we go.
So, so there's sites located north side of Bush Street between Bell Haven and the southbound off-ramp of the freeway. The site is zoned regional commercial, as are all of the sites around it. You do see the light industrial there, that's the La Prino site. If you go to the next slide, you, the site plan, site from, on this site plan, the north is to the left. So there'd be the convenience store building, drive-through wrapping around the backside. There'd be a separate building for the, for the car wash, gas pumps roughly in the middle of the site, and then the, the tanks would be underground right at the front of the site, kind of in the, in the landscape area. So staff has reviewed this site, oh, the major site plan review, because some of the sites, some of the uses on the site are allowed uses under this zone, and some require the conditional use permit. So the allowed uses are the convenience store, the food service and the car wash, whereas the fuel station and the drive-through require the conditional use permit. So we're bringing that all to you in one package. Staff's reviewed this and gone through it, and some of, there's conditions of approval in your recommended resolution. Some of the notable ones that we pulled out were that we want to ensure that the underground, the fuel tanks are undergrounded. I think in the application, it says it'd be undergrounded, and the site plan, it said they were above ground, so they do, by city code, they do need to be undergrounded. There are, there's plans for some, what we've been calling, I think we've mentioned, Judy's mentioned it before, temporary roundabouts at the Bush and Bell Haven intersection, as well as the Bush and on and off ramps. Those temporary roundabouts are going to be built within the existing right-of-way. However, Caltrans does have a preliminary design for the permanent roundabouts, which we don't believe will be constructed for many years, but they do require some additional right-of-way of this site just right on the corners, not, not widening Bush Street, but just, just cutting off some of the corners. So we're, we have a condition of approval that that right-of-way be dedicated now so that it's built into their development of the site. Also, there's an overhead power and communications lines that goes right through the site, so we're, and that is in an easement, which we believe will stay, and so we're recommending that that be undergrounded with development of the site. And then the, there's two drive approaches proposed. City engineer can make modifications to any drive approach that's close to 150 feet to the intersection, and so in this case, they're recommending that the driveway be a right-in only. And I think we'll, on a future slide, I'm going to show you an example of what a right-in-only driveway looks like, but go ahead and go back real quick to finish these. There's a, would be a 15-foot landscape buffer along Bell Haven, a 10-foot landscape buffer on Bush Street, plus the landscaping all the way to the back of sidewalk in the right-of-way. And then all the signs that are shown would be approved by a separate permit, so you're not approving any signage tonight. So this shows the, what the landscaping areas would be with the additional 15-foot buffer on Bell Haven and 10-foot on Bush Street, and then the right-in only. You can see in that picture, that's a picture from a site in Visalia, that shows just how a right-in-only drive approach would look like. It's very clear, and on the, on the opposite side, it's got, you know, no entrance signs. So that's going to be, that's, that's something that probably would be okay on opening day, but once the roundabout gets put in, it's, the roundabout will likely have a median right there between the northbound and the southbound traffic, and so the right-in only is going to be the only way to go for that drive entrance. So there's other conditions of approval I'd be happy to talk about if you'd like, but, oh, there's one more slide. So, yeah, so the elevation, that one? So the elevation, the building is shown there, go ahead, and as I said, with the industrial project, commercial projects also have some design standards, and this one meets or exceeds all of the design standards. for a new commercial building. And you can kind of see the different businesses that they are hinting at having at the site. So staff has recommended approval with the conditions that are in your resolution.
Okay. Thank you, sir. It is now 7:31. Comments from the public? Or questions? Hearing none?
Is there anyone on the line that would like to make a comment on the item?
Yeah, this is Eric Tinkin. I'm the applicant. A comment?
Go ahead, sir.
So I just want to thank you all for your time. And I think that we're in agreement with the conditions that you've come to the decision on applying to this project. And that we've actually gone a step further with the fuel tanks are planning to be underground, which is already a condition that you guys are requiring. And I think we've eliminated the car wash from the site as well. And I think, you know, I'm calling, so I can't really see what you're showing up on the screen there. But all of the poles and undergrounding of the utilities and stuff that are going to be there, I think we clearly show in an easement going the full length of the property. So it kind of fits right between the gas pump canopies and the, and the convenience store itself. So I just want to say thank you for your time. And obviously, we are in support of this project since we're hoping to construct it. And I just wanted to also say this is, this is going to be a store that's operated by the corporation as a, as a corporate store. Not going to be franchised out. And we've got a few of our members here from our company that are available for any questions that yourselves or the public may have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any additional comments from the public? No correspondence? Okay. We will close the public hearing then at 7:33. Commissioners? I have a couple of questions. Could you back that up to the initial site plan? It shows 41 and Bush Street. Go back one more, I believe. Okay, that's the one. I was curious, you know, you have the black and yellow that shows the project site. As we get back towards the triangle, towards La Prino, there's a break in there. What is that for?
You know, that threw us for a loop initially as well. It appears there may have, it used to have been a right-of-way there long, long time ago. So that, that break is showing up in the assessors' maps.
It's a right-of-way for what?
For a previous road that maybe existed at some point decades ago. I'm not sure exactly. All I, all I can tell you is that the, the break is showing up in the assessors' maps. And, and that's also happens to be where there's a page break in the assessors' parcel books. So that's why there's two separate APNs, but it is actually one legal parcel.
But it is, it is two APNs in, right?
There are two APNs because there, because the parcel is drawn on two pages. So it's one of those, it's one of those examples where I remind people very often that an APN is not necessarily a legal parcel. There are times when an APN is not a legal parcel. And so in this case, we have two, two APNs, but we only have one parcel. So there's, there's a future, the, the next item, we're going to talk about a parcel map for this site, so.
So the question is, are they going to get two tax bills? Since they're two separate APNs?
They have, they probably have been getting two tax bills for many years.
Looking at the map, I, I wouldn't doubt that right-of-way was originally where Bush was going to go through before they put the overpass up.
Yeah, if you look at the way the road curved.
Yeah.
Yeah, it is on the alignment.
It lines right up.
It does line up with Bush Street. Yeah. So it's, it's anomaly. And since we, since our, our maps are drawn based on the electronic APN maps, that's, that just showed up and we didn't adjust it manually.
Okay, could we move forward a couple of? Let's see what I get there. One more, please. Now, keep going. All right, that, that's one right there. Down here, it says, "Site plan proposes two entry and exit driveways." And I see one yellow entrance only. I'm assuming to the west could be an exit. Where are the other two?
Well, there's two drive approaches, but we're, we're saying that one of them can only be an entrance.
And that's where the yellow arrow is, right?
That's where the arrow is. The other, the sec, the other one can be entry and exit. And it can be left in.
The one to the west.
Yeah. It's actually to the north because the, the map is sideways.
Oh, okay, right. Got you there.
Yeah.
And then you were saying that eventually there might be a divider on Bellhaven? Is that correct?
Pro, yeah, just as, just not, not the full way. It, it won't get up to this, to the northerly entrance.
Okay.
But, yeah.
So you would be able to go out?
Yeah, that divider is part of the entrance to the roundabout.
Gotcha. So, yeah, it would end before that.
Yeah.
So if you exited, you could go north or south?
Yes. Yeah, so the, the northerly drive approach would have all turning movements available.
Okay. All right, now I understand that the car wash has been eliminated?
That is what he said.
Yeah. The drive-through is still there?
That's our understanding, yeah. We're, we're recommending approval of it. If you decide not to put it in, that's their.
Oh, I just want to make sure. I didn't see that in here.
Those, those are the businesses that are coming in?
Yes, our director is still planning.
It's still planned, okay.
That's what they have submitted. Yeah.
Okay. Any additional comments or questions from commissioners? It appears we're going to have service stations on all four corners right there. Call for the question?
I move to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Day.
I'll second that motion.
Seconded by Commissioner Franklin. Any further discussion?
I just wanted to comment. Commissioner Clement and I were kind of discussing the traffic that is, this is going to start to increase on Bush Street more than Bellhaven. And eventually, we're going to have a roundabout at Bellhaven and Bush. Am I correct?
Yes.
So that would alleviate that once that is in. But how long are we talking before that comes to fruit?
Nathan have, may have more concrete timeline than I do. But what I can tell you is that is a, the installation of that roundabout is a condition of approval of the Lennar project.
Okay.
Approved. And they recently turned in their improvement plans for the subdivision. So they are moving forward.
Because I was looking at that, including the Lennar project. But by that time, that should be taken care of.
Yeah, what, what we anticipate is that the temporary roundabouts would be in when these, when these are, when these are put in.
Yeah, okay. That's all I have.
Yes. Yeah, the right-of-way is already available for the roundabout. Yeah.
Any further questions? So it's been taken into consideration, the high point of traffic for West Hills College, that's their only ingress and egress, right? So be pretty busy right in that vicinity, won't it?
It will be busy. You would be surprised how much traffic a roundabout can handle because they never stop.
Just don't go there at 3 o'clock in the afternoon.
Hopefully, all the students don't need gas. Yeah.
Will we continue? Okay, the motion's been made by Commissioner Day, seconded by Commissioner Franklin. No further discussion or questions from commissioners? Hey, there's a call for the question. Commissioner Day?
Aye.
Mr. Franklin?
Aye.
Mr. Brewer?
Aye.
Mr. Clement?
Aye.
Commissioner Etchegon?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Carries. Next item. Another public hearing. Mr. Grant?
Yes, this item is related to the previous one. It is the same site. As I, as I emphasized before, the site is actually one parcel, even though it has two APNs. And the proposal is to divide the site into two parcels. The, the Johnny Quick site needs only about a little over an acre. The site's 3.29 acres. So this is a request by Legacy Realty and Development, the owner of the site, to divide the 3.29 acres into two parcels. There's, as I said, we talked about the zoning before. This shows the parcel map. And this project would be categorically exempt from CEQA as a minor land division. We are recommending approval with conditions. I wanted to lay out some of the conditions, point out something for you. The approval would create the parcel for the Johnny Quick project. We've also included the condition to provide right-of-way dedication on the southeast and southwest corners for future road widening. Another condition that we've, or that we're recommending is that the two sites provide a reciprocal access easement to each other. What that does, because since the other site, that's not, we don't yet know what's going to happen there. It's also zoned regional commercial, so it'll likely be a commercial site. We want to have the two sites provide access across to each other so that you don't have to drive out onto the street to get from one to the other. So that's something that we recommend on a lot of sites that have residential, or sorry, commercial sites adjacent to each other. Sometimes we also recommend reciprocal parking. I don't think we need to do that in this case. So this would just be for access. We've also, again, included the condition for undergrounding the utilities. The conditions of approval are listed in the staff report in the resolution. And then there's markups as well to the tentative map from engineering. And as I said, the parcel's categorically exempt, parcel map's categorically exempt from CEQA. And that's all I have.
Okay. And we will open the public hearing at 7:45. Any comments or questions from the public? Anything calling in?
Is there anyone on the line that would like to comment on this item?
Hearing none. Any correspondence for the commission? This, this public hearing is open at, or closed at 7:46. Commissioners?
And to me, this looks like just something we need to kind of sell up to get this connected with the other parcel, so. I'm ready to make a motion, but anybody else has any comments?
The motion by Commissioner Etchegon? And second?
I'll second it. I'll save, I'll save him for more.
Commissioner Brewer, you won the tie.
There you go.
Any further discussion after the motion's been made? Hearing none. Call for the question. Commissioner Franklin? Or Commissioner Etchegon?
Aye.
Commissioner Brewer?
Aye.
Commissioner Clement?
Aye.
Commissioner Franklin?
Aye.
Commissioner Day?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Motion carries. Director's report. Judy?
Hi, good evening, commissioners. And it was nice to get those projects approved tonight. Thank you very much. Those are going to be good projects for the, for the community. We've, we only have a couple of items really to, to discuss. The, we have a, a lot line adjustment for the Olem property. You know, the Olem is no longer in business. This is in the South Industrial Park. And, but there's, there are people interested in that site. But they are looking at separating it into two parcels. So we're reviewing a lot line adjustment for that right now. That will be done at the staff level, so it won't come to you. But we'll, we'll get that done and, and so that they can move forward with that. The GJ Gardner project that came to you, it did go to the city council for the first reading. They approved the first reading, and it'll go to a second reading at the next council meeting. We did receive, and I think I mentioned this previously, a, a small project with six, three duplexes, so six housing units out on Champion and Larish. That will be approved at the staff level as well. So we're reviewing that. They've submitted their second submittal. And that looks like it's going to be approved. It's being reviewed by the engineer right now. And then there has been some discussion at the city council level about maybe changing the PUD process. Because it seems like all of the projects request a PUD approval. And so we have in our standards a 7,000 square foot lot minimum. But just about all of the projects now are coming in with much smaller, some much smaller lots, but smaller lots, and lesser setbacks and different requests from developers. So we're going to be looking into maybe modifying the pre-PUD process, possibly doing something to where certain size lots are only allowed in certain zones. Because we want to have areas that are zoned for the smaller lots. But we also want to have areas that are zoned for larger lots, if that is something that a developer wants to develop. So we're looking at that. We have to be a little bit careful because the state of California, they want a lot of homes built. And so we can't really reduce the number of housing that we're proposing right now. But we can maybe modify something to where we, we add more in one area and then, and then have larger lots in another. So we're going to be looking into that. And then when we get it figured out, we'll bring that to you. It would end up being changed to the municipal code. So that would come to you, and then it would go to city council. But that's really all I have.
Could that be an averaging type of procedure, then?
That's what we're hoping, an averaging. So right now, we're looking at, and I think we mentioned this during the GJ Gardner project, is that we're looking at like almost 3,000 new homes in our housing element, which is from 2016 to 2024. So we're supposed, our goal is to provide another, it was like 2,965 units or something like that. So almost 3,000 homes. It is a goal because the city doesn't build homes. But we have to accommodate the zoning and our standards and everything to accommodate that many units. So we have to look at all that. So if we can do kind of a balancing, or like you say, you know, an averaging, we're hoping that that will work.
Does that number include the Lacy project? Since it's not part of the city yet?
It includes any new housing. So once that is annexed into the city, then it would be included in that. We don't have that many units right now. I think, what did I, I think we are only at 500 and something. What did I say at that last meeting? I think 530 units. So it is just a goal, but, but we have to accommodate that goal.
Judy, I have a quick question.
Sure.
The project on Lacy, what's the proposed number of, of homes? Or is it even?
It was about 550 single-family homes and then maybe a couple of hundred multifamily.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And that is still going through the EIR, right?
It is, still in the EIR process. It is, still in the EIR process.
Okay, another question, then. The marijuana production plant on, just off 41.
Yes, the one that's under construction.
Lot is going on there. And then between, you make that curve up towards 198, there are like four buildings that have metal studs. Are they independent from that project, or are they have something to do with the bedded irrigation across the auto fuels? Who does that belong to? What do they?
I believe all of that, the development that you're seeing there is on Venture Place, that's the road that culminates in there. All of that development is one project. It is still owned by Tom Voorhees, and it is all part of a cannabis project.
It is all part of it, even though?
Yes.
Are they physically connected?
The buildings are not physically connected, so there's some greenhouses, and there's a manufacturing, there's a production facility, and some other buildings there.
All right. They're, they're doing a lot of work out there.
Yes. It's exciting to see development.
Be exciting to see sales techs coming to the city.
That's really exciting. I got to say. Anything else?
Oh, not for me, I was just curious about this.
Okay.
I'm just curious, I wasn't here, this is only like my third meeting, so the old Beto's location that was supposed to be Wimpy's or something like that? What, whatever happened, is that still in the works?
It's still moving forward.
Oh, okay.
As far as I know, I mean, it's just taken some time.
Because I noticed they were doing parking lot?
Yes.
You know, repaving right there, and I was just, I was just curious where that was.
As far as I know, it's still going to be a Wimpy's. I don't think that has changed.
They got their approval for the drive-through?
Yes, yes. So a drive-through requires an administrative use permit, which is done at the staff level, but because the Johnny Quick came to Planning Commission there, and they were also getting a conditional use permit for the other portion, we elevated the drive-through to a conditional use permit. That way, it was just one permit that they needed instead of the administrative use permit, because there's no, really no reason for staff to do that at staff level when the whole project should be approved at one time by Planning Commission.
And didn't, they came later with the drive-through anyway, didn't they? With the Wimpy's thing? They could have done it all in one shot, but he changes mine later, if I understand that right?
I think, wasn't the drive-through always part of it? I think the drive-through was always part of it. They did come back later and wanted to add additional outside dining.
Oh, that's what it was, okay.
Yeah, so they did modify their site plan just, just a tad.
A quick question with the GJ Gardner project.
Yes.
I noticed that in, it got moved forward in the city council, but in the video, there's a bit of a hiccup. Was the condition for the, to make the roads one-way, was, was that part of, was that a condition that was included in the motion?
Yes, I'm sorry, that was a condition of approval, so they will work with the Public Works Department to determine, and refuse to determine which is the best route to be one-way, because it, one of the roads will be one way in and then one way out. We're not sure yet which road will be in and which one will be out. But yes, that was a condition. The other one is that the Planning Commission had recommended comp roof, so that stayed. And then the other condition was the, we had recommended the stucco wall, and then the developer requested a painted block wall. What we ended up with was a colored block wall, the same as the Self Help project that is just to the north on Vine Street, just north of Iona. The Self Help project has the colored block wall, which is our city standard, and so the council approved it with the colored block wall.
Was there any mention of widening Vine or doing anything, or putting some more lighting out there?
No, that project, I believe, already has lighting on the street.
Okay.
But no additional lighting in that area. Those typically occur when development occurs, and then you require them to improve their street frontage. All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Any reports, commissioners?
Just a quick comment, so just wanted to send a big shout-out and big, big ups to staff and all the, you know, people working on projects, you know, helping our community grow. It's really exciting to be able to be a part of the process, seeing the development of our community and things coming into place, and really moving forward, especially in a time when moving forward is extremely difficult. So to be able to make these leaps and strides, man, like that, that is, you know, y'all are doing the heavy lifting on this, you know, we basically just are reviewing it, you know, but it's, I still consider it a huge privilege to be able to be part of that process. So thank y'all for the work that you're doing, and, and, you know, let's keep growing, let's keep doing some big things.
Anything else? This meeting is adjourned at 7:56.